So I'll start the regular meeting. We have no public hearings tonight. So the first order of business is approval of the minutes to margin for the meeting. Anybody on the board have any comments, questions, corrections about the minutes?
No.
No.
No. So I'll make a motion to approve those minutes. All in favor? Or second?
I abstain. I was abs- last.
I'll second that.
So James can jump in and be the fourth to approve since Bill is abstaining.
I think we go over this and I think it's for, only if you need a qualm.
Well, we need him for a qualm.
Then he can.
Then he can.
Yeah.
Okay. So all in favor? Okay. So the first item is Michelle Tanaja or his gas station on Route 17.
Yes, hi everyone.
Could you sign in? I'll sign in right now. And. Yep. We know what who you represent.
Yeah, I don't know what it's called.
If you could use that.
Thank you.
Have you got a call one?
Thank you. See it's smart. Hi everyone, thank you for your time. So here, just to talk a little bit about the canopy branding as we move closer to completion for the project. And so we're likely to be doing the BP as our main brand for the gas station. And so you'll see on the renderings, just a little bit of wrapping around the canopy, the BP logo and the stripe, which is typically done in canopies. As I'm just looking for that approval from the board today, so we can proceed with ordering the canopy and the materials.
So this will be kind of the classic BP look?
We'll still do the, we're still doing the mansard canopy on top, which is the shingled roof. But just on the fascia, you'll have that BP, they have kind of one standard striped logo.
I meant the canopy over the pumps. That's kind of their standard?
That's their standard, yeah. Yep.
So I think there's a BP station on 17. It's gonna be very similar to that?
Yeah, except on, in that BP canopy next to that burla, you, you don't see the shingled roof on top. So we'll have that as more of an architectural shingled roof and those shingles matching the same shingle that are on the current building.
And then you're assigned, you'll have to come back for that?
We'll come back for that. We're still waiting to finalize that from BP. And so we're still, that was still a little bit of ways, ways away. We want to get the canopy ordered and things like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That green stripe on the canopy, that's not lit or anything?
That is lit.
Oh, it is lit?
It's an LED.
It's backlit?
It's a backlit LED. It's very minimal. You don't really notice it. You only notice it in the curvature within the burlas.
And your, you've probably mentioned this in prior meetings, but your hours of operation, if you define that yet?
We're not 24 hours. We said we close around 11, 11:30 based on traffic, but we don't plan to be 24 hours.
Anybody have any questions about this? James?
Yeah, so. In the report, there was a, there was some sort of note about runoff on Note 17 that I cannot, the handwritten notes. I don't know if anybody on our side was able to decipher that. Note 17 on their, I don't know, was it? EIS or something?
Typically, the board doesn't ask the consultants to review applications strictly for ARB. So I didn't review it. I just provided some background for the board for this evening. How is water runoff being dealt with?
Um, so that's for normal stormwater drainage on the site plan, we provide a stormwater report. It's being handled the way it's being done today, which is at the catch basins on the west side of the property.
I believe we addressed that.
Yeah.
Through the site plan.
Yes, my understanding is that this is just the canopy.
This is just the canopy, not other. Yeah, it's not the site plan, it's just for the canopy.
So the other notes I would have is the, the canopy design and the site plan indicate that this has a strong correlation to what's done in Ma La. The Ma La BP is on a road that's 55 miles per hour going 55, most people are driving 65 easily on it. This is on an area that's 35 miles an hour. Is it really necessary to do a 36 inch fascia with, with this sort of branding logo? And other municipalities, I've seen 16 or 36 inch fascias are fine, but only the BP logo and no horizontal branding strip. And you can actually incorporate a, like a crown molding looking for butter, either eight to 12 inches to break up to 36 inches and really focus just on the, on the BP logo. Because it's not like anybody's driving past this thing at a high speed where they need to know from a far distance that this is really a gas station. They're coming up just 35 miles. So I'd love to see that this isn't the case because it's a little rash being, you know, it's usually right next to the high school. It's right next to other, it's, it's next to our future gate. So the city, the town, Amlet, and this just seems a little bit like a lot, well, not a lot. It seems a lot gets overkill when it's, I mean, even your own site plans have actually the long town located.
Yeah, that was, it's an old rendering from when we had, we had done that, but. I would, I would say so, I'm, every municipality is different. I mean, obviously Route 17, you'll see those don't have the shingled roof on top, the mansard, right, to give it that architectural view. I would say you can see similarly, a lot of municipalities include canopy branding, as does the Valero. And Southfield, as is the new Seacoal in Sloughsburg. It does just allow for customers who sometimes may be in an area that they're not familiar with, you know, visibly see the gas stations from, you know, a destination that they can go to. We're happy to look at the 36 inch fascia, we can reduce that to 30 inches if that would be of an interest. You can't have the crown molding with some of the BP gray. It doesn't allow for it. And.
It's been done for Shell and Exxon and others. And so that's why I'd, I'd advocate for it, honestly. Alternative, but I'd advocate for removing the horizontal branding, maintaining the vertical BP logos. You're still having the potential for a sign that's, that's a standalone component. I would also advocate for, I don't know if this is part of something that I'm allowed to advocate for, but the landscaping between the street and the, and the BP and to integrate the signage into a monument sign instead of a vertical sort of standalone sign that would integrate with the landscape design. You know, those would be kind of my three recommendations is eliminate the fascia branding, stick with the logo, integrate some landscape along the streetscape and then integrate the monument, monument sign that pretty much just has a, a single, you know, whatever the price of 87 Canadian gas is into the, into the thing. No one ever reads the rest of it anymore.
Yeah, for the board, the, the sign, as the applicant said, that's not before you right now. So that would be for later. And the landscaping is part of the site plan and right now that's. But I know you want to say it, so I.
Recommendations from, from somebody who wasn't here whenever this was discussed.
Totally understand.
Okay, thanks, James. Susan?
I wasn't here either when it was approved and everything. I just want to say I really, that addition of the, the roof is really nice tying with the building and it really, it gives a kind of a hometown feel. I like it.
I assume this white fox for the sign is not the size of this sign.
No, so that was just there, the, if you remember, they were initially operating at the time. It had golf, so I just didn't want to confuse anyone. And so I wanted to, to keep that off. Oliver wasn't available to get some of the.
And if you have options of sizes of signs, I would recommend that. I know that's not on the table tonight, but the smaller the better, I think.
Yeah, I, I think there's some specific guidelines that you guys have for your signage of, of being like 10 feet off the ground. And so there's certain stipulations that I think we have to adhere to. And so that was the goal, to just adhere to those signs as much as possible and square footage. But, you know, our, our goal is in, we want, you know, price is an important piece, right, of every gas station, every, you know, everyone's very competitive. And so it's critical for us to make sure people see that we have regular. We'll also have E85 here and things like that, which we worked with the USDA on for some granting and funding. So we want to highlight some of those for offering fuels. We also want things on even, but we can talk about that, I guess, when that comes up. Yeah.
Okay. I answered all my questions, thank you.
I have no comment.
No question.
So I'll make a motion to approve the.
So first, I need you to reaffirm the negative declaration.
I'll have to reaffirm that?
Yeah.
With a motion?
Yep.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to reaffirm the negative declaration for Seeker for this project. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And next, a public hearing is not required under Article 12 of your code. So if you want to waive the public hearing, can I have a motion to waive the public hearing?
Can I make a motion to waive the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And third, we did send.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm gonna say no on that one. I'm always, I'm always in favor of public hearings. So if somebody has a comment, I want to hear it. So I'm, I'll say no to that.
Okay, so three in favor, one.
Okay, and the last is it went out for GML referral because it is an amended ARB application. So we haven't gotten the report back yet. So you can't approve it this evening, but you can authorize the drafting of a resolution for your next meeting.
So I'll make a motion to authorize you to draft the resolution.
Okay.
At a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I have one question.
Yes.
He's really here so that he can place an order for his canopy.
So the drafting of the resolution, based on your conversations tonight, would look promising for him to be placing that order?
Okay.
Unless you tell me otherwise.
But it's at his risk.
It is at his risk.
But it's probably a.
It doesn't look like you're seeking a denial here. So if you were gonna order it, I know that's an expense. So.
So I think he has some direction to think about.
Sorry, question, does the backlit LED illuminated horizontal branding even the town code?
Do we have anything that restricts that?
There are certain lighting standards in here.
I mean, we would, hopefully you would work with us to maybe turn it off after 11?
Yeah, we don't, we don't keep it on. It's just waste of energy. I mean, they're LED, but we, we turn it off usually to, to notice. We do keep some area lighting on just for safety if somebody needs to pull off. But we don't plan to keep the entire lit gas station. We, we want, we purposely want to close, right? It gives our employees a rest. It gives everyone to know. We don't want a gas station where people know that it's 24 hours. That's by design. So we can usually turn everything down. And so the canopy branding can absolutely be turned off.
Right, and I believe it's in the site plan approval resolution that he has to comply with the lighting standards in the town.
I believe in it.
So that's, that's been covered. Okay, I think that's, anybody else have anything? This? Are you, do, I know it's preliminary, but do you have a date when you might be ready to open?
We're still waiting for a little bit of the electrical equipment. That's been the biggest holdup. So that's all been placed. If we get that earlier than the next three, four months, I think we'd be right around that three, four months range is what we're aiming for.
So October-ish?
October-ish, if we get everything. If we don't, that kind of delays it. And then we can't set certain equipment up until we have the electrical power. So, but our expectation is that we receive that no later than November. That was the latest given date. So we're working toward getting everything done up until then, at the end, and then hopefully doing the final install of those things.
Okay. All right, thanks, Michelle. Okay, next, next item is Tuxedo Reserve, West Terrace Site Plan and Subdivision Extension Request. So as I understand it, what's on the table is one six-month extension for the site plan?
And the subdivision, which is, would bring you to your February 4th, 2025 meeting.
Well, that would be two 90 days on the subdivision, right?
It's gonna bring you to this thing. I, I try and do it so that it comes to a meeting, so that.
Yeah, I know it's 180 days, what, how are we gonna cut it? So that can be one motion?
You could do it in one motion and motion to extend both the site plan and subdivision to February 4th.
Do you have anything to say about this? Do you want to, I mean, it's pretty straightforward.
It's granted extension. You know, if you needed to walk in, I was giving the talking, I would have said a lot more.
Anybody on the board have any questions about this? We've done these extensions before.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to mention something for the board and the applicant's information. Site plan approval under your code can only be extended three times. So this would be the first extension they would have. They have possibly for two others, but just in case something goes awry.
Okay.
That's an extension on the site plan approval?
Yes.
The extension on any other issues going forward?
Subdivision's under town law and right now it can be really forever.
Frankly, the critical path right now is the county health department review. So we expect that to fall places in the next couple of months. So I appreciate you identifying the re-extensions for site plan. We, we don't expect the.
Yeah, I hope you don't hate it.
Any questions, Matt?
No.
All right, so I'll make a motion to extend the site plan and subdivision approval for roughly 180, or 180 days until February 4th, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. At a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes care of that one. Uh, the Commons, Buildings 1 and 4, Site Plan ARB and amended wetlands approval. So whoever wants to give us a brief summary of that?
So I'm gonna put the presentation over to Mitch, Mr. Chairman. I should just step out and hop on a different meeting.
Okay.
I need to leave.
Will you be back or you?
I'll come, yes.
Okay. Mitch, I mean, we don't know who you are, but it's just Deborah doesn't like it when I don't host people.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't read.
Okay, all right.
And if you could use this to record it.
I signed in.
Appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. For the record, Mitch Newman with Lennar, Vice President of Land. And it's our continuing pleasure to be back before you. And tonight, we have the honor of presenting the, what I'll call the Recreation Elements of the Commons area. So you've already heard and granted, thank you, site plan and subdivision approval. And the site plan was limited to the first new residential buildings of the Commons. So tonight, we're gonna move forward with the site plan and ARB present, presentation for the Fitness Building, which is also known as the Clubhouse, the Events Building, as well as the Sports Courts, which are the outdoor athletic facilities associated with the Commons. So our presentation this evening will be through two witnesses. Lisa Higgins will talk through the architectural review and go through the, the buildings with you and the programming for the buildings. And then Ashley, oh, there, sorry. And then Ashley will go through a waiver request with regard to the Events Building. She'll talk about the wetlands permit that's associated with the Fitness Building. And then she'll also talk through the. Before we get started, I just had one, I guess, point of clarification. So the Events Building is kind of unique and as I said, at least we'll run through that. But for a moment, I just want to highlight them on this overall site plan. So the, the Fitness Building is down here towards the bottom of the map. And again, we'll talk about that more detail soon. The Events Building is over here in what I call this elbow section of the Commons. So the Events Building is just kind of unique in the way it's structured in this special permit. And some of you may recall this, but I just want to give you a high level view of why are there two recreation element style buildings on this plan. So Clubhouse, Fitness Building is, it kind of makes sense just by the, the name, and we'll talk through that in a few minutes. But the Events Building has a unique nature to it. The way it's structured is it's about 4,000 square feet and we'll, Lisa will go through how, how that looks. But the, it's designed to be for the applicant's sole use, meaning the developer or Lennar's sole use for the first three years after the construction. And what is Lennar's intention or our, our hope and intention is that we're gonna be using that as a sales facility for the beginning of the community. But we also may have homeowner association events there. After that exclusive period, that exclusive three-year period, then it becomes available under an agreement to be pleaded, under an Events Building Agreement, that say that the town, the Homeowner Association and Lennar have kind of a shared use for the building. And we have to work out how we're gonna share that use. Lennar, of course, would want to continue some marketing and sales element of it. The Homeowner Association could use that for meetings and events. And the town could use that, and there's a whole list in the special permit, for a variety of civic uses, including uses with the library. So the library might have events that they could have in there. So we're kind of excited that there'll be different groups using it and that'll serve different purposes, not just for Lennar, not just for the Homeowner Association, but also for the town. So all of that is sculpted out in the special permit, but it's just kind of unique how that came together with the work with the town. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa to go through the buildings and the architectural views.
I have a question. May I ask?
Yeah, sure.
On what you just said, I'm curious if there's triple ownership and responsibility for that building to include the town, how does that affect the property tax event?
That was not discussed in the special permit. I could speculate that the town might take the position that so long as the applicant or the association own it, that it'll be taxed, that it'll stay on the tax rolls as opposed to the town owning it. There is a provision, I didn't get into every detail, that for a, after five years, the town has the option to purchase the building and take over. And then there'd still be some shared use, but then it would be the towns to own and control. So I'm going to, Kelly, I won't put this in the resolution, but, or in a potential eventual resolution, if you're favorable, that if, if and when the town makes that decision, it would have a tax implication. But there would not be such an implication during the shared use. And I would think that when we come up with that Events Building Agreement, as it's spelled out, I think in Article 15 of the special permit, that would be one of the items that we'd have to negotiate with the town. And quite frankly, hadn't thought of that. So thanks for mentioning.
But that's an option, not an obligation for the town.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, it's an option. And, you know, it depends how it's going. It depends how much use they're making with it. But we had to add, had separate meetings with the library group also, because they had expressed an interest in how they might use the facility. Not necessarily for a, a library or a library annex, but perhaps a place to have events. The vision was for there being an author that might come to talk about a book or give a lecture series. So it has all kinds of exciting possibilities. Thanks.
Thank you.
Lisa couldn't say?
Obviously.
Oh, I'll sign in.
Thank you. Is that okay?
No, that's it.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Lisa Higgins. I am Director for Planning for Lennar. Tonight, I will be presenting for you the fine architecture of what Mitch has already touched on, to be probably the two more exciting buildings within this whole community. So first, I'd like to start with what Mitch referred to as the Fitness Building. However, we've officially documented it as the Community Building. And that is in this location here, identified as Building 1, where you see this parking structure. Building actually sits on top of that, but we'll go through that as well. Sorry, I just want to orient us before we get through. So this is Quail Road here. This is the primary entrance of the building. And then over here to the right side, you'll see we have the amenity outdoor space. And then back here, we give you the access to the under, under building parking. And then we'll talk about this access point here that brings us back up to the front from the parking area. So I chose this particular page. I know we had more of a 2D design with all the materials called out, but I felt like this gave you a really much better feel of what that building is going to lay out like. So I chose the 3D model. So just to orient everyone, this is the front elevation of the building, which is right against Quail Road there. And then this would be the rear elevation. And as you can see, you have that under building parking structure underneath. This is the exciting side of the building, right side, where you get to overlook the lap pool, the pergola, and you just get to enjoy that outdoor space. And then last but not least, it's probably not as exciting as the other elevations on the building, but quite essential in the sense that we have stairs coming up this side of the elevation so that if individuals are parking in the parking lot in the rear, they don't have to go all the way through the parking structure to access that main level. So a small but effective piece of design there.
Can, can they access upstairs without going outside?
They absolutely can. If they were to park within the structure itself, there's stairs and an elevator for access. So here we have the main, the main level of the community or fitness center. This provides 18,377 square foot of activity space. Up here would be the Quail Road. So this is your primary entrance right here. You enter into a lobby with grand ceilings of 20 feet, or 25 feet high. Just behind that lobby area, we have an office and a business center. That business center will be equipped with four working stations where we envision individuals who may primarily work from home, needing an escape from time to time from the, the stimulations that may occur in the home when you're working there. Small children, dogs, things of that nature, without having to make that full commute to the office. Coming over here to the left, you'll see we have a game room and a multipurpose room. This would be a great place for individuals to host parties or even just a nice retreat from coming out of the hot sun and relaxing with some more or less strenuous activities. As you walk through the multipurpose room, it takes you out to the patio, which overlooks the pool area. That's the pretty side that we looked at earlier. And then coming from the patio, you'll come back into the building and you'll see a yoga studio. And then just underneath there, you'll see a pergola, which in very small letters here also says yoga lawn. We foresee these particular spaces being for yoga, meditation or some sort of dance classes. It can be very versatile, but it gives people the option of do I want to be indoors or outdoors to enjoy these particular activities? Coming down to the far bottom here, we have a very generously sized fitness center where we'll, we'll house exercise equipment. Just above that, we have a squash court. And then you'll see the men's and women's locker rooms and restrooms are sort of centralized within the building space to allow for easy access from all the various amenity areas. And this building would not be complete without this amazing gymnasium, which happens to be sized for a high school regulation basketball court, but also doubles as a two pickle court overlay. So again, looking for that versatility within these spaces. And that in a nutshell is the main level. I'm sorry.
You didn't say volleyball.
Did I miss the volleyball?
But you could, the sports court would be a volleyball.
Yes.
Sorry, that's my thing.
Well, I only want to highlight the popular ones, Mitch. And there originally isn't much for us. I'm sorry. Oh, no, it's all right. So not much to talk about here, but I did just want to give a quick visualization of what that under building parking looks like. It does consist of 63 spaces. And then over here in the corner, you'll see you have your elevator and stair access up to that main level. So would you like to stop and take questions at this point, or do you want me to continue with the next building?
Well, why don't we see if there's any questions on this one? Susan?
Why did the pool get added back in? I'm so excited.
As soon as we heard you'd be fatal.
I have a question. I think that. I think that there's a swimming pool you have in the back.
The lap pool, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't notice fence around it. Maybe, maybe a code requirement. Perhaps it's there and my uh, my specs just aren't strong enough to spot.
So what is actually, there is fencing in areas where it is required, but what's actually tying this off from the primary outside areas of the community is a required retaining wall, which also offers a bit of privacy.
I didn't notice it from my distance. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely.
So who's going to manage this? Is it going to be Lennar or is it going to be related?
No, I'd actually, you know, I might jump in.
Absolutely.
Uh the homeowner association will own and manage and um maintain it. Uh obviously you'll have to have insurance. There'll be a staff. There'll be an onsite manager. We envision uh that onsite manager uh might have an assistant that would be handling activities. But that's, we, we're trying to let the homeowners determine what level of help they need. In some communities, we see that the homeowner association wants someone to help set up activities. They want someone to plan activities, so they might have an activities director, director. In others, they'll set up a committee, a committee of some of the homeowners that'll come up with uh how they want the rules to be set up.
So the HOA will actually own the build, everything, the pool, the building?
Yes. Yeah, at, at some point along the way, the HOA documents will provide a transition from the builder from Lennar to the HOA, and there'll be a, a literally a deed to them to own it.
And I'm not suggesting that it's required, but there's no kitchenette or any food prep facility here?
No.
No, uh because when, when we've learned our lesson, when we get into that, all of a sudden we're in another use category. I think that creates a different type of building construction. So the idea is that if there is an event, if, if there's a party, whether it be the events building, which we'll talk about in a second, or here, uh it'll have to be catered with food bar. There may be a standalone microwave and, and a refrigerator, but uh there'll be no on-premises cooking.
And no shower facilities?
Oh, there were showers in there. If you look in here. We go back to here, you have your restrooms, you have your showers, and then you have your locker areas.
Oh, okay. All right. Glad you had a question.
I did. Um regard to the pools, are they specifically any kind of depth that you wish to construct them at? Like, do you have a deep end that's twelve feet deep and shallow like three foot?
So the large pool is a lap pool, and I'm not familiar off the top of my head with what the depth requirement would be, but it would match whatever regulation for a lap pool would be. And then the kiddie pool would just be a small waiting toilet pool.
Okay. There's a reason why I asked that question. There's a certain depth requirement for a swim at your own risk. So some HOAs don't want to hire a lifeguard, permanent lifeguard. So they'll turn around and, and they'll want some kind of a depth regulation that meets the state requirement of not having a full-time lifeguard. Therefore, they can issue a swim at your own risk house. That's why I was, I was asking that question.
Thank you. Yes, so we will make sure that if that depth exceeds the swim at your own risk, that we're staffing appropriately. But my guess is we're keeping it under that minimum.
Well, if that's the case, that's great. Mitch, thank you.
Okay, we can do the next one.
So next we have the events building, which Mitch, again, very beautifully explained and summarized the uses and purposes for this. So stole my thunder a little, but I'll forgive you.
I know.
No, he took all the cool parts. So this here is building four. This is the events building. Right here is the front facade, and then the back here would be that rear patio that will people look at as well. So as you can see, the exterior elements of this building were designed to complement what we did on the community or fitness center. But not only does it, is it complementary with that particular building, if you'll recall back in April when we did um the ARB approval for comments, buildings five, six, fourteen, and fifteen, they presented color pack or color palettes that we are taking into consideration when applying these colors to these particular buildings so that they are all complementary with one another. I don't have too much to speak on the elevation page, so if anyone has anything they want to touch on before I flip it over, it's my feed of opportunities for that.
Looks like there's a fireplace internally?
There is. With a nice full height chimney, fully stone.
So if you don't have gas in the development, it'll be propane or wood?
Uh it may be electric. We haven't vetted that out in its entirety yet. But there will be some fireplace there. So because the uncertainty of the future of this building, you'll find that it has a more simplistic design on the interior. You come up, there's a beautiful cover court and a shrink here where you enter through double doors and get into a vestibule area. To the left is your um bathrooms. To the right is a modest storage area. You walk into this wide open space that we're calling the lounge, beautiful eighteen-foot ceiling height. You have that fireplace in the back and double doors on either side of that. The patio is open specifically for the reason of allowing that natural sunlight to come into the glass through these rear windows, giving that beautiful natural sunlight on the interior open space here. This particular area is where we foresee utilizing for our sales and marketing efforts um while we are able to utilize this space. These multipurpose rooms that are flanking the lounge on either side are a little, a little bare in their element as such. We've just designed them to be wide open spaces. We foresee that leaving us the flexibility to utilize these for homeowner, major events, HOA meetings, um the types of things that Lennar would be able to utilize these for efficiently, but leaving them in a somewhat more bare condition so that if the, the town was to purchase this down the road, they can easily design this space for what they think it would be best utilized for without having to do a major overhaul. So it's really, let's make it look great, let's make it look nice, but let's keep it simple so that there's the ability to future program this in a way that makes sense. Thank you so much. That's the conclusion of my presentation.
Any questions, Bill?
No.
Susan?
Um one story. There's no parking underneath this one?
There, no, this is a, just a one-story um building that just has cathedral ceiling height. So it gives the nice appearance on the outside of two stories, but it's actually just one story.
And then parking for this building?
That would be surface parking in the adjacent parking lots.
Valerie, you reviewed this. Want to go over your uh?
Yeah, sure. Um we had a few comments specifically concerning with some of the information that was on the plans. So for example, commercial square footage, um the commercial square footage is listed as a hundred and one thousand square feet. So that's something that we don't know if that was a mistake or if, you know, there is another amended site plan.
That, that was for the comments i- in its entirety, correct?
Yeah.
Your comments a- addressed other buildings other than one and four, I think.
Yeah, I understand that, but like, these are, these are plans that are being submitted and they're, and they're specifically identifying those areas as uh additional, like the square footage is completely off. So it's something that from the year twenty, from the November twenty twenty-three plans that you approved, now there it's noting additional square footage of commercial space, so.
That would have been a typographical error. The, the intent of this was not to change anything other than the two buildings and the sports area that I'll call about in a minute.
I understand that. So that's something that you're going to want to, because ultimately all, all records are all documented should reflect the same thing. So that's something you're definitely going to want to check, um because.
Check that out.
Right, because then the parking tables also are off, associated with that. So like once, ultimately when you're, I understand that you're giving site plan approval for this component, but it's all part of the site plan approval.
We'll make sure it's all consistent.
So the, the number, the correct number is fifty-one thousand and change?
I believe so.
I don't have that handy, but we'll make sure that it's correct.
That's your understanding, Valerie?
That is my understanding.
Fifty-one thousand.
Fifty-one thousand five hundred and thirty.
That's correct. Um then also the events um space, uh we found that, you know, the, the event space is proposed. We felt that amount, the criteria, that's in the special use permit. But we do question the, so in the actual like twenty-twenty-two um plans that were adopted by the special use permit, there's a lot of specifically called out commercial community use amenity space, and it would be really helpful to understand which components of the amenity space are being taken care of by the commons and what's, are still remaining in terms of the overall uh original twenty-twenty-two plan. Because specifically the special use permit does note that the planning board has some discretion dealing with recreational facility, but they ultimately should still reflect the twenty-twenty-two preliminary plan. So it would just be helpful to understand that as part of your submission package as to what components you're taking care of and what you're not. I mean, you do something similar to that in the Excel spreadsheets that you provide us for the residential units and commercial space, but it would be helpful to have that for the recreational space as well.
Okay, we'll provide that data.
And then the wetlands permit, um the application specifically said that there was to be, the wetland buffer disturbance would be the same, but we just want documentation pro- proving that that's the case and demonstrating that that um is um in actuality. And then our ARB comments, um there is a, a waiver that's being requested for roof pitch. And then we did a detailed review of the landscaping plan, and there's a number of edits that are required. And the applicant sure can address those, dealing with the planting numbers and types, and then also just some additional qualifications.
We'll, we'll certainly work with you qua the between to address all of those.
Okay.
And after we will talk about parking and the waiver in a couple moments.
Thanks, Valerie.
John?
Cameron, I don't have anything on the site plan. This is primarily looking at ARB events living and everything else. These buildings are, were envisioned from the beginning when you initially approved the comments.
Kelly?
Um I can just talk in terms of procedurally for this element, you would be reaffirming your finding statement. Uh we did submit this to the county, or Deborah did submit this to the county for GML. And in terms of a public hearing, it's required for the freshwater wetlands permit, but it is discretionary for the site plan and the ARB.
We didn't get the two thirty-nine back? Okay, so we can't approve it?
No. Well, you wouldn't be able to approve it tonight anyway for this one because you do need a public hearing on the freshwater wetlands.
But we could have split that out in theory.
In theory, yeah. In theory, you also don't have a resolution. Well, actually, in actuality, you don't have a resolution yet, so.
So Susan, you have any questions about this? Uh, uh do you want, have more that you want to go through?
Yeah, so if you don't mind, what, what I wanted to also do, just highlight for you the outdoor sports elements. Lisa talked about the lap pool that was adjacent to the um fitness building, but we also have some outdoor elements across the street that don't rise to the level of architectural review, but they are part of this site plan. So I want to give you a quick look at what they are. So uh across, ideally across the street from building one, from the fitness building, um following from, uh from right to left, uh we have programmed and planned a top lot. Then there's uh outdoor surface parking. And then adjacent to that parking is a tennis court and four pickleball courts. And then behind the pickleball courts are two dog parks. And one of them is slightly smaller than the other, uh because the smaller one is for the smaller dogs. The larger dog park is for the larger dogs, uh so that they have some separate areas. And then you come down to your retaining wall, and then you have a sports lawn area that's, has a couple of benches lining it. And the idea there is uh it's just for open recreation, whether uh, whether it's soccer, whether it's throwing a football, whether it's a frisbee or some organized outdoor sports. There's just opportunities uh for people to have the outdoor sports activities as well as um going back to the fitness building for the indoor sports activities. So it kind of creates this all-weather scenario where regardless of whether we're summer or winter, there, there's something to do in terms of recreation in this, in this quadrant. Uh so that just rounds out the site plan conversation.
So similarly to the building proper, these will be owned and operated by the HOA?
Yes, owned, operated, and maintained. Correct. So when Lennar completes construction of these, uh there'll be a transition period where we turn it over to the HOA. Correct. And, and there's, just in case you were wondering, there's a stormwater basin back there. That's what that uh, that, that other feature is.
Kelly, HOA-owned facilities are on the tax rolls?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh so with that, I'd like to turn it over to the fashion. Uh can you decide, right?
I do.
I'll, I'll sign.
Thank you. Um Ashley Li, vice president at A-Cara. I think I'll start with the waiver request. So on the, on the events building, uh there was a requirement of a pitch for the roof to be nine over twelve, and we are proposing six over twelve. So it's a slightly less steep roof. And that enables us to have a larger floor plate. As Lisa was describing, it's an open floor plan, flexible space to be allowed uh for more flexibility in the future if the town chooses to take over the building or to change the programming. Um it has been designed to reflect the design of other buildings throughout the development. It has a lot of the stone elements that you see throughout the commons on the same similar color palette. Um so we are requesting that waiver. Uh any questions on that?
Everybody?
In regards to the wetland permit, so we can provide an overlay that shows where the previous limits of disturbance was until where, compared to where it is today. It is the same amount of disturbance. It is, uh the building is two thousand seven hundred and thirteen square feet of disturbance within the wetland buffer. This yellow line is the wetland buffer. And the pool and the patio are seven thousand two hundred and sixty square feet of disturbance. And that's right here within the wetland buffer. Uh as you may recall, when this originally went through the site plan approval process, this was shown as a surface parking lot, and this was shown as a concrete patio. So it's been changed to be a building and the pool and patio areas. It's the same amount of disturbance. We flagged it as needing an amended wetland permit because of the change in the use that was within the wetland buffer, but the disturbance area is the same. Um so we are wondering if that actually does trigger the need for amended wetland permit. We, we included it out of, of an abundance of caution.
You're not getting an approval tonight on this one.
Okay. Oh, can we avoid the public hearing? I think we're going to happen.
You just don't want to testify, I guess.
I don't want. I'm here every month anyway. All right. Um and then lastly, the parking. So because we switched from a surface parking lot to a building with parking underneath, we did lose two parking spaces. Um that was because of the addition of one ADA space, as well as we lost one because of the columns that are supporting the building. However, the overall parking requirements are met for the, the commons as a whole. Um as you may recall, we looked at the ratios for the entire commons area, uh and we can provide that updated information to respond to Valerie's questions. Any questions on those items?
Susan?
I think we're ready to move.
Some parking garages, and I'll call it a parking garage. I don't know if that's accurate or not. Some are sprinklered. Is this going to be sprinkled in the parking garage?
It will be in conformance with whatever the sprinkler requirement's on. Um I don't have a call off off the top of my head, but will definitely be in conformance with the building.
Because some of these uh electric cars kind of spontaneously start a fire.
That brings us zero comfort.
That, that brings up a good point that's controversial in the country with charging stations. Do you, you anticipate installing charging stations?
Well, we, Related actually has been in talks with Tesla about potentially installing some charging stations in the parking lot between the top lot and the um tennis and pickleball courts. So haven't seen those progress, but that was some early conversation that, that we might be able to get Tesla in there to put in some, some stations.
Are they a universal design?
Well, the way it works is they're, they're focused on Tesla, but I think Ford has an agreement with Tesla that you could also charge with an adapter. But no, they're not perfectly universal. But um I'll certainly take that point to heart and when I talk to Related and say, maybe we should just use a universal, you tap your credit card and anybody can use it.
Not everybody can afford a Tesla. Yeah, another question relative to that. Have you come up with a quantity of them? Where are they going to be located, sir?
No, uh unfortunately, when you're working with a company like Tesla, they, they will give you direction, but I have not gotten into the weeds on that at all.
Okay. They should be factored into the gross electrical load.
Oh, absolutely. We are working with Orange Rockland. Uh we meet with them every two weeks, and we're working on an exact topic. We've actually, to be proactive, we anticipated a car charging. car charging system in every garage for every home we're factoring in. So we're trying to be very conservative in our evaluation of the electric use, anticipating every garage will have one in the community. It's probably not realistic, but we have to shoot high so that we have.
That's good. That'll encourage O'Nard to perhaps design their system very conservatively.
Ye- yes, we, we have to. We can't, we can't come short. So.
Might require a less substation.
And that's true. It might. We're working with them on that exact topic.
If there are going to be any public, um, charging stations, do we have to revisit something on any site plan or I don't know if this was addressed in, in special permit, it probably.
I'm not sure if it was addressed in the special permit. Um.
So to, to be determined.
Yeah.
Okay, so i- if and when we get to a point where we further decided a charging station's taking up a spot or two, uh, we can, we can talk to Kelly and John and Valerie, Debbie, try to come up with where we need to be.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just add one thing? Just want to remind the board. So the way the special permit was structured, the, uh, electric vehicle charging station stalls count as two stalls for the applicant. So if they were to lose a stall or replace it, they actually, on the net, they gain one space.
So you need to sign on that fairly early.
Yes.
Means it'd be the parking spaces.
Yeah, I liked the way you're thinking. Well, we're trying to go as fast as we can, um, but you're right, you're right. Uh, I will, uh, push our business partner, say, let's shake a leg here.
Very well.
Go to the
Sure.
Yeah, so, so that concludes the, uh,
Well, I don't want to go to North Ridge yet. No, let's, let's finish this one off and then we can go to that one. Okay.
All right, anything else?
That concludes our presentation on the Commons area.
Yeah, so that, that is the conclusion of our test.
Okay. So, we have to schedule a public hearing on the wetlands.
Yes, and you have to determine if you want to hold a public hearing on the amended site plan and ARB for buildings one and four in rotation.
Yeah, well, let's start with that one. Um. Any comments as to whether we want a public hearing on the, uh, site plan and ARB?
I know everybody's tapping me. Uh, I was always in favor of having a couple of these. We've had so many with Lennar and Associated and everybody involved. We've had, gotten any emails or any letters and nobody's appeared on our screen or they've actually come and said anything. No, I don't think that's, I wouldn't call for one.
Okay. Bill, you're.
Uh, so.
All right, I, I don't think we, we need one either. So I would make a motion to waive the public hearing.
For the site plan and ARB, yeah.
I would second.
I will second that.
Okay.
Kicking myself in the butt.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the wetlands?
Yes. Do you want that at your August sixth meeting?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Second, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Okay. We have to reaffirm our finding statement?
Reaffirm the finding statement, please.
That's a motion also?
Yep.
So could you just summarize what the finding statement has in it? To re-
That was forty.
No, no. Give us the executive summary.
The executive summary is that the finding statement evaluated the project as a whole, the special permit, site plan, ARB, um, all of the environmental impacts. It found that there were potentially some significant adverse environmental impacts, which were then mitigated to the extent practical by certain, uh, plan change elements that the applicant put into play.
That's all I'm recording. Okay, we can just motion to that.
You, you can just motion to reaffirm the findings.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the finding statement.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Yep.
All right.
Is there one more?
Um, just to let you know that we did send it for GML referral on this one, but we haven't gotten it back yet. And by we, again, I mean Deborah.
We can, we could authorize you to prepare draft resolution?
Yep.
So I'll make a motion to, for that, for Kelly to prepare for the August meeting.
I'll second that.
Second. Favor?
All right.
Okay, and that's it for the comment.
Okay. So now we go to, uh,
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I have a question, Kelly, regarding the, uh, GML.
Yeah.
Uh, since they're real slow in getting back to us.
They're actually doing pretty well.
They are, oh.
They are, but they have thirty days, so sometimes you can push them, sometimes you can't.
But we can't say yay or nay.
Until either the thirty days have passed or until you get it.
Okay.
You can't vote on something conditionally based on that either. You just don't have jurisdiction.
Got it. And our next meeting is less than thirty days, right?
Your next meeting should be more than thirty days, from when it was referred.
Okay.
And if we don't get any response, it's a default. Yes, it's okay.
That was my point.
It's a default. We didn't respond. I don't want to say that they didn't ask.
But that doesn't hold anything up.
No, it doesn't hold anything.
We can proceed if they don't get back.
And typically, if it's close to that thirty-day time period, Deborah usually tries to reach out and get a response for you. She's been very successful.
Okay, North Ridge.
Okay, uh, hi again, Mitch Newman with Lennar and, uh, tonight is the second part of North Ridge. We had the presentation at the prior hearing. And tonight is the public portion. Is that?
No, this is not a public hearing.
It's not a, okay.
We can.
So that we're continuing.
We, we had those. We had those in June.
Okay, guys, sorry about that. And I missed the last meeting, so I apologize.
Don't let it happen again.
Yes, I can see the look I was getting. Sorry about that. So, uh, what we did in the interim is we submitted revised plans or, which were addressing the engineering and planning comments. Uh, so this evening, if there's any com- any further comments from your engineer planner, we'd be happy to go through that. But other than that, I just want to just reorient anyone if there's any questions. Uh, this is the overall site plan. Room seventeen is at the bottom of the map. Enter Quail Road on our northerly entrance and come up Quail Road, the first right would get you to the blue area, which is, uh, North Ridge. And North Ridge, as you can see in this second map, is the seventy-two townhomes, the seventy-two thirty-two-foot-wide townhomes. And I'm sure as Lisa explained in the last meeting that I missed, uh, that the townhomes, uh, have a mix of master bedrooms down and up, so it provides for, um, some age-targeted, uh, potential buyers that might not, not want to wait for the age section coming on down, uh, for another presentation, probably in the fall. Uh, but in the meantime, this is a great way to, to get started with those, uh, wider townhomes. Uh, so the only testimony I think that we wanted to present tonight, uh, Ashley, do we need to go through, um, wet homes or wetlands?
Okay.
Uh, so based on the last submission, we did submit two waiver requests. One was for landscaping, uh, swapping out some native cultivars for the native species that are on the plant list that's in the smart code. Uh, and curbing, as we discussed at the last meeting for Upland Park, same issue here. We are proposing six-inch curbing where four-inch curbing was required.
And I actually had an additional one. Did you see the draft resolution?
No.
There's, uh, some waivers that are being requested in connection with the emergency access road. Uh, the emergency access road is required to, well, not required to provide a right-of-way, it actually says none, and then twenty-foot easement. Um, and the paving has to be asphalt or pervious where less than six percent. Right now, they propose a fifty-foot wide right-of-way easement and reinforced turf. So that's the waiver.
Do you want to take a look at that? It's the italicized.
Well, I'll actually just take a look at that. Um, we did note there, I think there was one provision that probably doesn't have to be in there, and that was power of three A's.
Town, for stacked towns.
Yeah, if you, if you leave it, it doesn't.
No, I, I'm taking it out. I'm replacing it with something else. I'll go over the, I had a couple of revisions, um. I had a couple of revisions, but I'll repeat those with four when you're ready.
While they're looking at that, you want to go over the, the specific conditions?
Yes, um, well, if I could start just at the beginning, I had a couple of minor typos, which will be fixed. Um, I had the acreage as forty-seven point six oh two. I did that for a reason and for the life of me, I can't remember it. So it's actually forty-seven point zero five three, so I corrected that. Um. This portion of the property is only one of the three properties that is normally involved. So if you've noticed the difference in that property involved paragraph, that's why. Um, I had typo, I had typo. If there's some of the plans that were identified in terms of dates, um, some of them were a little off. And then I just reviewed the emergency access road and she reviewed the North Ridge. She'll sort of view the landscaping. What I put in here is the, um, native cultivars that they're proposing that were not included on the represent, the sample list, as Valerie pointed out previously. And then the specific conditions, do you want me to read them all or just the changes?
Just.
The changes.
Let me summarize the changes.
Okay.
You don't have to read it verbatim.
Okay, so I did delete three A because that referred to stacked townhouses. They are not included here. And it kind of goes hand in hand with the emergency access road waiver that the new three A will be that prior to the signing of the plans, the applicant shall confirm with the building inspector and emergency service organization um, that the buildings and emergency access roadways are in compliance with the New York State Fire Code, including but not limited to the width of the emergency access road and associated proposed gate. And.
Mr. Chairman, can I just give you a little commentary on that?
That's the only change I had.
So, um, and Kelly did get that from me. That was one of my comments that I gave to her. Um. The smart code has, uh, the road hierarchy, which indicates that the emergency service for, uh, emergency access road should be sixteen feet wide. That is actually contradictory to the New York State Fire Code, which was updated in twenty twenty after the, you know, after the applicant had gone through the smart code provisions and everything else. So although you may this evening waive the smart code requirements, you don't have authority to waive the building code requirements. So I've included that to go to the building inspector for determination. If the building inspector makes determination that the sixteen feet does not meet the fire code, then I think the applicant's recourse is to request a variance from New York State.
Or, I'm sorry to interrupt, or we could comply.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then I, I was hoping the next part, we can comply, but we don't have to come back to the board because the condition sounds like.
The waiver.
Yeah, either, either we get the waiver or we abide by the decision.
Yes.
What is, what is the new width from the New York State code?
Twenty feet minimum.
Twenty feet?
Yeah. And I don't know if the surface proposed by applicant meets the fire code requirements either.
Are there any current requirements?
Not on a straight access road like this, but there is a gate proposed and there are pretty significant gate requirements. There was a question and I didn't recall, uh, Bob Brady, the new building inspector asked me, was the gate proposed by you or was it proposed by the previous building inspector or requested by the previous building inspector?
Yeah, we didn't add it. It's, it was, it's whatsoever been on the plans for the past several years.
Okay, so.
So somebody even thought of it or asked for it, but when we meet with, with the building inspector and, uh, the emergency services folks, of course, we'll be guided by whatever they ask us to do. We don't want to get in the way of those decisions.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like it's pretty straightforward. It has to be twenty feet, no?
That's right. Yeah, I, I think it is, but if there's site constraints, there's something else. That's what the variance procedure is for at the state level.
Could you show us where the emergency access road is?
One, I can still go over the.
Yep.
And so just based on this conversation, I added the following sentence to that proposed condition that if the emergency access road is determined not to comply with the New York State Fire Code and the applicant does not receive a variance from New York State, the applicant can revise the plans to comply with the fire code without being required to return to the planning board.
That's fine with us.
If that's fine with the board, that just allows them to go from sixteen to twenty and not have to come back.
I would like to point out that it does go through, uh, O-M and Bubba. So if we did increase it from sixteen feet and went to twenty feet and went, that would increase the amount of emergency service within the town's regulated wetland buffer. We get, uh, an exception to increasing that without having to get a new wetland permit or.
Let me tweak this again. Hold on.
Well, while Kelly is doing that, so where does that emergency road ultimately go?
Uh, it connects out to, uh, this is mountain.
Mountain.
Road.
Yes.
Is that an existing road?
Yes, it's an existing town road with existing town residents. This is like the New Barfield.
Okay.
Will that town road now be in default with the new state requirement?
The town road does not need to be brought up to current state requirements, but I'm pretty certain that road width is greater than twenty feet.
And you're saying, you know, if you build it to twenty feet wide, you'll be encroaching in wetlands, you said?
So there's a wetland right here. It's an army core wetland, uh, but the town has a one-hundred-foot regulated buffer off the army core wetland. The road runs right through the wetland buffer. You can see this is, this is the line here for the buffer. So we increased the road width from sixteen feet to twenty feet for the length of the road. That would increase the amount of pervious surface. With it, or there just service.
But do you have the ability to curve the road?
The, it, it goes beyond the, um, it goes all the way out to the town property where the buffers.
Okay.
I'm not going to be able to, this is just lap then.
Cause like, correct me if I'm wrong, when, when you get into a wetland buffer, you get into the Army Corps of Engineer, you're going to disturb that. Don't you have to dedicate land?
That's for wetland disturbance.
Yes.
Right.
This is a buffer area.
It's just a buffer.
And this is just a town buffer because army core buttons don't actually have army core buffers. It's just a town.
Okay.
But then you're in a restriction.
Is this road going to be, uh, dedicated to the town ultimately or it's going to be maintained?
No, this is going to be maintained by the HOA.
Okay. Just as all the other roads, cause then the winter it has to be plowed and.
Well, but, but not all the, but, you know, Quail Road and Yiddo.
But this will not be up.
This is strictly for emergency services.
But it still has to be maintained.
It, it does, yes.
Right?
Yes, just.
Plowed, sown.
Yeah, it has to be accessible all year.
This station will be maintaining, mostly we're talking about, Snow River will maintain the entire North Ridge Loop. They'll be responsible for that emergency service.
You just have to be careful it doesn't fall through the crack and that's not a normal building.
Yeah.
My, my suspicion is if that road was not maintained, the building inspector would send them, uh, notice that they need to do that under the site plan portion.
Okay.
And so I've amended that last sentence again to end with, without being required to return to the planning board for an amended site plan approval or an amended freshwater wetland permit. So now it's very long, but I won't read you the whole thing again.
You're going to get to what the orange sections are?
Um, the orange sections are also wetland buffer disturbance areas.
Okay, that's what that.
Yes. So this is where, um, there was, there's going to be some grading, this area, some grading in these areas as well, and obviously the road.
Anything else you want to mention about this?
Uh, no, uh, thank you. That concludes our presentation on North Ridge. Appreciate your time.
Any questions, Susan?
Um, the, so we're saying, I'm asking Kelly. We're saying if they widen it to twenty, we're giving them permission to go into that buffer by four more feet and they don't have to do.
They don't have to come back to you. I mean, they may be able to do it in, in looking at the topography or whatever, move it four feet this way. I don't know, but they're going to have to evaluate that on paper and in the field.
Okay, and then, um, there was a question about a gate at the end connecting to the town road, I guess. Is that?
Yes.
There is a gate or there isn't a gate?
Uh, well, it's, it's land.
So like a locked gate that just the emergency folks would have?
Usually, but that's why we said it has to go to the building inspector and emergency service organizations. Cause if there's a gate, we want to feel it's get through.
Well, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we'll work with them, whether they, sometimes they want to break away a gate, sometimes they want to key box or in, in the case of emergencies, whatever, yes, they do it.
So the gate would be.
Okay, thank you.
See the, the box that Ashley highlighted, it kind of envelops the entire
Yeah.
area. So no matter how we slide it, we, we do need that relief that the board is hopefully compliant with.
There's an ARB component to this approval and I haven't seen any.
Um, yeah, so we, we did, uh, that presentation was at our last meeting. I think Lisa went through the ARB elements of that.
It was two meetings ago, we did the public ARB presentation and three meetings ago, we did the, um, the pre-public presentation.
I was here, but I.
Do you want a quick overview?
Does anybody on the board want an overview of that?
No.
No, that's okay.
As I said, it's a thirty-two foot wide, three bedroom, two car garage townhomes. Uh, we, we build them in various locations in Jersey, very, very well. Uh, we, we build them in various locations in Jersey, very, very well received. Folks like me that want their master, master bedroom down, you have a great option. If the master bedroom's upstairs, you have a really great looking lower level. So, uh, we get a lot of, uh, interest in these homes.
We did bring the board if you want to just take a quick look to refresh your memory.
Yeah, why don't you do that? Well, she's getting that ready. You have any, anything else on this?
No, I'm.
No. Yeah.
So these are, as we discussed in our prior meeting, we have four planned models within this collection. Um, two are master ups, two are master downs. That gives us the versatility for a larger interest in what Mint was referring to earlier as age targeted until we get to that age restricted area. And this is supposed to be the full elevations for what it looks like on the in-ground location condition. And here is the exterior elevations for a typical walkout basement elevation. So as you can see, you get that nice extra slatter down at the bottom. You get the deck coming out to your main living level so that you have direct access from that level as well. They range in approximately twenty-six hundred to twenty-eight hundred square feet. We have two interior, two end units. Our interior units have the front entry, whereas our end units would have this nice side entry. We should give them just that additional room element. They are all flat, two and a half bath. And then the sunroom is a standard option, which means we will include that on all of the master up homes. The master collection does not have a sunroom feature, um, but they will all get the decks. Um, the master ups take the sunroom and then the only true option will be whether or not they want to finish that basement area, which would then be inclusive of a wrap room and full bath.
Okay, okay, thank you. Valerie, I know you had some comments.
Oh, I, yeah, it was just a minor comment. I mean, for the most part, they took care of all our, uh, A R B, uh, comments and clearly they're asking for the waivers from the landscaping. Um, and then, uh, the one, the one comment was again, just, uh, dealing with some of your tables. You revised the parking, uh, based upon our comments, but now the parking requirement table specifically, this is dealing with C S one oh two specifically has required for both. And I think one of them's just to be proposed or, so just take a look at that table on C S one oh two.
Sean?
I gave comments to Kelly since this was on for a resolution.
Okay. So I can make a motion to approve the draft resolution, correct?
As amended this evening, yes.
Amended. Have a second?
Me, I have a second.
Call in favor?
All right. Okay, thank you very much.
And before you go, a couple of things, um, not related to this, but just in general. Uh, I know Sean and Deborah have a few concerns about future submissions and the timing of future submissions. Sean, you want to describe what, uh?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, this submission came in and it was, it's comprehensive. And as you know from your agenda, like there are a lot of different elements on for tonight. When the submissions come in, they come in really as one file download and it's, it's kind of very difficult. Uh, I know Deborah's troubles with sending it to the county. They're not as familiar with the application as you are. Now, if there's any way we could get that and maybe package based on what application it is in the future. If it's going to be multiple submissions, that would be really helpful on our end so we don't have to. And if we miss something, it's even more problematic. Uh, the other was really just the timing of submissions. Um, you know, submission comes in on the Friday before the Friday of your meeting. The submission, I think, came in, you know, at per hour, but it wasn't terribly late. But that does leave in instances like this, when we're considering a resolution, it really doesn't leave a lot of time for Valerie and I to do our reviews and get comments to Kelly so she can incorporate it into her resolution. So maybe in instances like that, maybe we talk about a submission, maybe moving it up or maybe make it a partial submission or, or something. So, um, we're open to suggestions with the applicant. We just, it, it just compresses the schedule, um, so much so that we're trying to do a lot of things in the background and we don't have a lot of time to get them done.
And you get the draft documents the day of, which I know is.
Deborah, you had a couple of thoughts also?
Um, no, I think Sean addressed.
Okay, with, with the county sending it to the county is.
Yeah, and I did speak to Christina about the, the, the whole issue with the link and all of the, you know, so she separated it out. So I think it was fine, at least for this submission.
Okay. And then the final thing, if you could, over the next few weeks, give us some rough schedule as to your submissions for at least say three months, but, uh, hopefully the rest of the year, what we can expect, what you expect, uh, from us, just so we can have a, a guide as to what's coming.
Okay. Yeah, I'll just speak to that for ten seconds.
Sure.
If you don't mind, because we, we realize we've put a lot of pressure on the board and, and your professionals, uh, recently with West Terrace, the Commons, North Ridge and Upland Park, almost I'm sure feeling like they're all happening almost at the same time. And I bet you Christina would second that also. She's got to put all this together. So, uh, we're kind of thinking, maybe we need to take our foot off the gas on the approval side of the equation. The next section that we expect to come in is Mountain Lake, which is only twenty, only twenty-four single family homes. Uh, easy for me to say, has to look at, it's not only, uh, but I think we're going to let that sit in the background for a couple of months while we fine tune it. Uh, so I don't anticipate a next section over the next couple of hearings. Uh, we're also doing a lot of work behind the scenes, uh, to get the next section after that in, which would be the age restriction section, which is a very large section, uh, in the community. But we might need an amendment to the special permit before that proceeds because we're tinkering with some of the unit count there. And I know that the board, uh, town board had very specific limitations on what they wanted to see there. So we might need to revisit that with them. So I do think there's going to be a, a, a lull, if, if you don't mind me saying it, um, in our submissions, which also will give your professionals and, and Lennar the chance to catch up on some of the behind the scenes paperwork and resolution compliance, working through the county level, ironing out the RMJ Rockland folks at the utility company. Uh, but we do truly appreciate you working cooperatively with us at every facet of this to get us where we are today so that we have every, every chance to start delivering homes next year in West Terrace and moving ahead with all the land development work. Uh, we, we, we and you've done a lot of fantastic hard work and, uh, we've probably put too much out there too early, but we are excited to move this ahead on, on all fronts. So we appreciate it and we do also apologize that we have put some crimps in everybody's schedule.
So our August meeting then will be pretty light. It'll be the public hearing for the, um, the site plan. Oh, no, for the wetlands.
For the wetlands in September.
Basically it for August. And do we review the, uh, the approval motion in August for, for that one?
Right.
Okay. Um, any progress on the soon sign we've been talking about?
I would love to say so, but our marketing department, um, we have not loved what they've come up with and not that, not trust me, neither myself or Lisa have a say in the matter. But collectively the division hasn't loved what our marketing department's come up with. And, uh, as long as we're off the record, they've been working on it for like seven months. It's crazy. Any one of us could have come up with a sign design in a half a day and it would have been fantastic. Um, so we're, it's going to continue to play out. They want something spectacular. I quite frankly, I've said, don't need to go for spectacular, you just need to, something that looks beautiful and, and merges with the area. So that's a long way of saying, we're worried on that. We had a, a conversation with the, the supervisor and he had the same question. When are we going to start to, to see some of that pop? So, uh, we're pushing.
So I, I would suggest on that sign that you have somewhere that somebody who's interested can, can go to a website, a phone number. You know, if they see it, well, who do I talk to? Cause Deborah gets a lot of calls about this.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Well, we need a, we need a attorney general approval, right, first?
For the H O A.
Yeah, we have, there's two levels of attorney general approval. One is for the, it's the ultimate H O A to start sales. But there's another interim level, which we did secure, which allows you to have a phone number, a website and, and take. Um, people can just put their names on a list, but, uh, we haven't executed on that, which would mean putting an entry sign up there, which would take the pressure off of Deborah because then people would have all that. But I'm going to convey your stern message to our team in an email tomorrow morning. I'll frame it a little, uh, tougher than typically coming, but I'll, I'll make sure to, uh, spice it up.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Would they have to come back to the board for the sign or is it just a building inspector?
Building inspector.
Okay.
So I anticipated, and if you don't mind, just stay with us for a second. Building inspector view for the sign, that's fine. But when we come up with the glorious entry monument, I assumed we would at least come back to the board to present it to you.
That should be the board. This is just a temporary coming soon sign, right?
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, but the big sign will have to come back to the board.
Okay, is that, is, we don't have to decide this now, site plan approval or is it just for review and?
I have to see what's on your original plans to see if you had anything as to where that's going to be located or anything, but I don't recall that you did. So if you didn't, then that would be amended cycle.
Okay, good to know that, so I can tell them, hey, if you come up with a design tomorrow and you want to put it up Monday, we have a process.
Right.
Okay, all good. Thank you.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Good evening.
Good seeing you.
Let's just give them a couple of minutes to.
Give us time to sign.
Sign in.
Thank you.
I want Deborah to call in.
Yes.
I'm signing in pretty fast. Thank you though.
Yep.
Slide too many times.
Yeah. That's what I do at my. Okay, fine, okay.
Well, we get.
Good night.
Take care of yourself. Okay, our, uh, final item is the, uh, Watchtower Kingdom Hall. Uh, appreciate you guys hanging in for an hour and a half listening to anything else. Uh, we won't put you last next time. As you probably know, the zone change could not be done by the town board at the last meeting. Uh, we needed to have seeker approval before they could do that. There was some confusion about that, I think. Uh, but we will be addressing seeker tonight. And we'll, we'll be reviewing the part three of the E I F, which you submitted. So if you want to make your, uh, your presentation and then we can decide to what extent we want to go over part three. It's a very extensive part three, as you know. So with that, please.
Uh, John Montague, I agree with Peterson Engineers and John Kamala is with me tonight. Um, we thought we would just focus on the part three. That was what we had from the last meeting and then hopefully if we can get through part three, definitely schedule our public hearing for the next available meeting, if possible. So, um, there were a number of items that were listed in the E I F. Uh, I'm just going to go through them briefly. The first one was in fact, uh, land and it's primarily looking at soil erosion, um, measures, um, roof control measures and geotechnical with a item for groundwater and, and, I mean, for, uh, for bedrock. We submitted a geotechnical report that showed that in that report, they had more than that, but definitely for our bedrock. We have a glacial tilt here, amount of bedrock formation. Um, we identified that we instituted a full stormwater, uh, management plan. And in that stormwater management plan, or our D E C require requirements for sediment erosion control. And, you know, assuming through site plan review that we get all of that nailed down with Sean, uh, we should, we feel that that impact on, on land should be considered. On the groundwater impact issue, um, biggest thing on that was the impact of, uh, of a well from the site. Uh, as you know, the Department of Health will be reviewing that well. Um, the well is being scheduled for drilling it and testing it as required. Uh, we'll be able to do that and, and provide all that information to, to our site plan review. Um, but the other thing is that the well is actually a fairly low yield well. We only need gallons per minute to meet our requirement. Five gallons per minute is anticipated, given the other wells in the area. And we are, uh, more than a quarter of a mile away from the nearest other residential well that's downgrading of us on the same grid. Um, I know there was a question about wells that are on the other side of the bridge as you go down, uh, the other way, but those aren't going to give an area away from the point of influence or flow from this area. And I would suggest that we, you know, understand that we are doing all of this review for the Department of Health and they'll be looking at that as well. And so we believe it's a very small, minor impact that would, that would be associated with that. On plants and animals, um, two species of concern here. One is the, uh, the bat species actually, and the other one is the potential for rattlesnake. Um, the bat species is addressed through agreeing to mitigation by clearing windows uh, and meeting the required clearing windows that start in the film and end in the launch. Um, on the rattlesnake, we did identify that the habitat that the rattlesnakes, um, tend to look at are very different than what you have on this site. They like rock out crops. They like a certain orientation towards sunlight, uh, which is opposite of the orientation of the slope on this site. Um, they do like lower wetland areas as well. We don't have any of those conditions here, so the likelihood of any rattlesnake encounters here would be very minimal. Uh, and there's also a, uh, a take permit that we may have to apply for, which is just for incidentals. Um, and then these are the D E C. So again, we feel that there's adequate mitigation and a very low likelihood of there to be any impact to any, any rattlesnake. Um, historic and archaeological resources, we did get a response back from Chipotle that was included in the letter. Uh, one of their biggest concerns was visual and you know how this would look in visual, kind of with any other historical structures in the area. We provided them a, a, a few shed analysis of that and they signed off on it and say they had no concern. So we believe that we have, uh, no impact on, on that resource. Um, on transportation, at the last meeting, we did discuss the fact that we are, um, we are a very small fishing pond in the intersections that are being looked at right now and that we did conclude the same things that were concluded in the, in the, uh, findings statement for the E V project where there are some site distances, um, that have to be cleared. Uh, that was part of the conditions in that finding, which would be cleared on, on that anyway. Uh, and that, um, in the event that, uh, after a certain period of time and a certain number of units are constructed, an additional warrant analysis will be done for a traffic signal, um, by the E V project. Our peak periods really, uh, is more on Sunday than it is on weekdays. And so we don't really have a significant impact, uh, in all. Um, a question was brought up on whether or not we could avoid the peak hour on Sundays. The peak hour on Sunday in the traffic study is from twelve to one. One of the things that was discussed is we have, uh, you know, there are three congregations here. And there's, there's an option that, you know, they could discuss having one of those meetings on a Saturday and two on Sundays. But the reality is, is that, uh, you know, the timing, you would never have three congregations meeting all in that one hour period or exiting in that one hour period. So again, we feel little to no impact from issues on, on the intersection for transportation.
If I may, the, the commitment based on the A V project getting to a certain point of number of residences.
That's correct.
Would we ultimately put that in a resolution? Could we, um, enforce that? Since it's kind of related to a project in Ramapo?
Well, you can enforce it if it's in your resolution and the building inspector chooses to enforce that. It's in his discretion, all enforcement. So we'll try and frame it and phrase it appropriately.
I know it's a, it's a good faith promise on your part, but we would probably want to incorporate that into our resolution that when that time comes, that another traffic study, uh, would be done.
Mr. Chairman, you're talking about that situation where maybe that time doesn't come for whatever reason or maybe that time comes in a date that's projected far outside the traffic study.
I don't think anybody can predict when it's going to come, but.
Uh, I don't know, would you be willing to do that traffic study regardless of the other project?
Well, I mean, you, you have to realize that the traffic study that we're doing is a study that just looks at the traffic generated by the Kingdom Hall.
I mean, you just did one. I mean, you just did one.
And the traffic that we generate from the Kingdom Hall is not going to trigger any significant change to the background traffic that's here or the, the warrant analysis that's being requested to be looked at through the A V project.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying to address the chairman's concern is would you be willing to do another review of that intersection, similar to what you were going to do for the A V center when this facility is built out and functioning?
Uh, that's a question for you. I mean, I don't know that it would really change anything. I just wouldn't. And that's, that's the point. We'd be open to doing it. I don't think it's going to really change the end result, because ultimately that, uh, intersection is really based on the potential of the audio video. And, and we'd, we'd be fine doing that as a book of post occupancy study.
The, the only concern really, uh, from my view from the traffic is that, that peak hour on that Sunday. And you mentioned the timing before, but I think it was a hundred and thirty-four vehicles, you know, you had some in, some out. But, you know, I, I agree, you probably, if you were to repeat the study, but at least it gives the board some level of confidence that if there was an issue, we would have the means to address it.
If you're open to that, the board.
Just one final question on this. When, when the meeting is over, does everybody leave at the same time, or is it staggered?
No, it's, it's staggered. In fact, um, if we have, there are criteria. So the, the congregations can select a time that works for them on the weekend. That's why we do have some on Saturday, some on Sunday, because that works more for the congregation. But they do have criteria. They can't start before nine. They have to do not start later than six P M., and there must be a minimum of forty-five minutes in between. And usually you have a low flow of traffic for twenty minutes. In other words, uh, that group of a hundred and fifty or two hundred that will be there will be flowing out for about twenty minutes. And then, again, forty-five minute minimum, and you're going to have more than that. But minimum, then you have a good five minute window before you start seeing the trickle flow in.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so the, the, the next one was, uh, if I, I was a little bit late, primarily who's on doors. Um, there was some discussion about the use itself. There's a, uh, probably some concern about bells ringing and steeples and the announcement systems, but this facility does not have any, so there are no outdoor, um, uh, noise generation from the facility other than its standard equipment. So it's got H V A C equipment that's outside and a closer. Um, that equipment is, you know, is obviously, it's got to be quiet enough that it doesn't impact what happens inside the facility. But on top of that, it is a low generation of noise under sixty-five decibels. Um, and that's within, uh, you know, a few feet of the unit itself. The units themselves then will be significantly far enough away from the roads or any other residential uses that by the time you get there, with sound attenuation, um, the noise that's generated on the highways is going to be much more significant than what you would hear from here. Right? So during the operation, there are really not, uh, any concern on noise in the, in the surrounding neighborhood. The next one, however.
I, I want to bring up something about, if I may, uh, during construction.
That's what I was going to bring up.
Oh, okay.
I was just going to go with that.
Okay.
Um, so the next thing was construction, uh, the discussion about construction and hours and, and the rest of that. Um, we have already, uh, indicated that there wouldn't be any activities on Sundays that, that was, was terminated and, and discussed at the last meeting. The hours that the town allows for, uh, eight A M. to eight P M. on, on Mondays through Fridays, um, and similar hours on Sundays. Um, no problem complying with that at all, and we would stay within the code requirements for that. Um, there was a suggestion that, you know, any of the earthquake activities that have, happened closer to the, to the highway towards the residential areas happened earlier in the day, that that not be a nighttime activity. You know, that once the site work itself is done, most of the work is in the building, and the building is even further away from any, any residences. So, um, and then you're separated by the highway too, which has constant flow and, and sound generation from that. So based on that, you know, I don't believe we're going to have any substantial impact during, um, during construction on any adjacent residential.
During the discussion of, uh, part two, I think I brought up the fact that I did not want to see any construction on federal holidays. And I would want to get the board's input on this, but, uh, I'm not saying to change part three. But I would certainly, uh, want to include in the resolution when we get to that point, um, that federal holidays, there'd be no construction, no activity. Okay, and I, I am Phil, and now do you have any comments about that, Susan?
Um, I have support the chairman on that.
Okay, good. Appreciate it.
You're okay with it. I'm okay with it.
Okay, appreciate that.
I'll also fix that in the draft, uh, negative declaration. Just in there, I said that they committed to not doing, performing any construction on Sundays, so I'll say Sundays and federal holidays.
But the E A F doesn't have that changed.
No, the E A F doesn't, but I want to make sure I have it in the deck, and then we'll put it.
Okay.
So the next, uh, section is the impact on human health. There was a concern about whether or not, um, you know, there are environmental issues that could be on the site that could be uncovered that would be still. Um, as we identified that before the property was, was purchased, um, a, uh, phase one and phase two environmental site. So we had a few things on the project. Um, it was for the entire fifty-two acres, so that includes the old historic home. But I do want to note that that house or that residence is still usable. It's still occupied. Um, it still has a well. It still has a subsurface fuel tank. Those are the two items that were listed as, uh, as R B C number one and two, uh, in the analysis. So part of it was a recommendation that when that well gets abandoned, it gets abandoned officially. We would agree to that, but the well is still being actively used right now. The other one was that the fuel tank, which doesn't have to be registered, because it's just a small fuel tank, that that also be decommissioned and removed from the site, and that is agreeable also. But that would only come when and if that structure is ever, you know, removed or torn down. Um, hopefully that's agreeable to.
Does that, uh, structure, since you're going to use it, does that have a, a, an active C O at this point?
So that structure is not part of this project. We don't really have any say or control over it. You know, that is.
You said you were going to use it. You're going to occupy it.
I'm not saying that we ourselves are going to use it. We, for this project are not. It, it's still in use, is what I wanted to say.
Who's using it?
It's still part of the fifty-two acre piece of property.
So is there, who's using it? What's?
I think we'd have to, I'd have to ask. Yeah, so right now, it's, it's not being occupied or used as a, as, as anything besides where people are coming in. So, for example, when we may need some water or there is, let's have a little brief meeting or something similar to that, that, that they're using it because it's part of owning the property. Uh, but it's, it's not, there's not a residence there, and there's not permanent occupancy of any sort.
The fuel tank is buried, isn't it?
Yes, it is. Just a.
Has it been tested?
And it has been tectus tested, yes. And that was in the report, that it had past tectus testing. So the bigger issue, though, for this, uh, group is the fact that the field that we are, the portion of the site that is the open field, which is this portion of the site right here, um, was in agricultural production years and years ago. Um, and it's still an open field. And so there were testing for pesticides and herbicides. And it came back with very, very low levels of D D T and D D E pesticide. Now, when I say very, very low, the way that the, the D C part three six, uh, three seventy-five regulations look at pesticides is if your levels, um, are, are low enough and they are, and they're below a certain threshold, it's part of a unrestricted use. That means that you don't need to do anything ever, you know, find a unrestricted use. The E A S, uh, site specifically was done. Um, you know, it was done before the property was purchased without any, you know, but it was. Um, it has been dedicated now as a commercial use. The D C also has then what's known as soil cleanup objectives, S C O. The soil cleanup objectives list a minimum amount of contamination that's allowed for each type of use that you have. So it's commercial, residential, and so on and so forth. They also have two categories for environmental, and they also have one category for ground. In all cases, um, I mean, and so in all cases, the protection of ecological resource, protection groundwater, protection of health for both residential and commercial. Um, the levels of the pesticides that are on this piece of property are below the cleanup objectives of all of those categories from the D C. So if we were to go to the D C and say, we want to build on here and we want to clean it up, they would tell us, no, we're not going to. And when I say well below, I mean significantly low. So you're talking about one point seven milligrams per kilogram of soil, and we are at point zero zero one three. Right? So we are so well below that, that one of our requests would be that we don't have to wind up putting a deed restriction because we're already below any thresholds for cleaning. On top of that, and one last piece that I can add is we're in a cut and fill situation here. We need to cut the area up where the building is, and we're going to be filling the area where that pesticide soil is. So we'll be filling over top of that, basically encapsulating anything that's there now. Um, so those conditions, you know, the way that we're building the site and the fact that we are already below the cleanup objectives, I would say that we don't really have any issue that we would request that, that not be included as part of the, of the resolution.
I think, uh, Sean needs to make a comment about that.
Yeah, uh, I had made a comment. I distributed comments on part three to the board, and the part three was comprehensive. It was professionally prepared. Um, that recommendation actually comes from the applicant's D A S that they perform, that their consultant performed. Now, their consultant performed it in two thousand and twenty-one, I believe. So it was before the proposal here with the cut and fill. And inside the E S, E S A, there was no, um, I couldn't find a map that highlighted where testing was done. So it just seemed to me that maybe the testing was representative of the whole field. So I don't know if the applicant provided any additional information as to where it was done, or.
Hey, so in that report, there is, it does actually have a map.
Okay, I didn't find it. I'm sorry.
Um, and I can send it to you again if you would like to.
Yeah, I, I tried to find table one. I couldn't find it.
It's a difficult trophy. It was difficult for me to find everything to do, but, but, uh, I could, I'd be more than happy to pull those back out, share them with you, but, you know, the, the, uh, what it talks about here is it talks about the location on the site. It talks about the, the northeastern part of the field, which is the intersection here against the tree line, and that the western part of the property didn't have any issues. And it's, you know, it's kind of makes sense because it's the lowest area of the site over the field.
Yeah, so I would say that if that's the case, and the applicant's, you know, committed to doing the filling, then I think that you could probably modify your part three to, uh, indicate that the applicant would be doing, performing filling. Um, but, you know, you can revisit this later, uh, as part of your site plan.
Didn't you make a comment, and I, I couldn't find it right now, about New York state regulation being exceeded?
I don't recall making that, in terms of the environmental health impacts.
I thought I saw that somewhere.
No, I had made some comments relative to applicant and New York State D C hydraulic loading rates. Did that be it?
I, I know it doesn't have to be remediated. You were below that, but there's another standard. I know.
No, I, I don't recall saying that, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. Just did have one other, uh, thing to bring up. So with regard to the well, the well is definitely a very low usage well. It's going to use the same water and gallons per minute basis as a single-family resin would use. Um, they do have a fire storage tank on site, which is a large tank. I think it was twenty thousand gallons. I had made the recommendation that they consider filling that from bulk water, so there's no impact, long-term impact to the aquifer going further out. Um, the applicant did say tonight that they were going to get a department of health people as well. Um, the Department of Health is only concerned with the applicant providing enough quality water at the quantity they need for their use. Department of Health doesn't look at surrounding wells. So if there's any concern that you have about the applicant's well, and again, it's the same use, essentially the single-family house. If you have any concern, any of the surrounding wells, you may want to consider a requirement for monitoring. Um, and they could use the existing well they have on site, uh, to drop a probe in and see if there's what the impact is on the aquifer. I think it's probably a bedrock, bedrock well.
Uh, in this case, it probably will be once you get down.
Okay, yeah, so the problem.
So the, you know, well, I don't know about that. And that was a very high build.
Yeah. It's not, it's not the, you know, if you, do you have a bedrock well, right? You could have fractures, and the impact that you have, you could intercept the fracture before it gets to somebody downgrading of you, and you can essentially just rob that fracture of water and, and lower somebody's.
So I will say that, um, now, given the geotechnical that we have, we know that we have a very large glacial element above it. So I can't tell you what the emissions will be, whether for bedrock.
So my, my suggestion would be that they just can include a monitoring probe in that their existing well, and they could see if there's any impact at all to that well, and that's probably closer than any of the other wells.
Yes.
And that would see an impact before any of the residential well seen impact. If they do some monitoring and there's a significant drawdown, then you would revisit this topic.
I found what I was referring to. It's on page twenty-three of your report, under rec. three, historic agricultural use. And, um, the results can be reviewed in table one, which I couldn't find. Results indicate that the pesticides D D E and D D T were identified at concentrations above the NASDAQ part three seventy-five unrestricted use criteria in five of the twelve samples.
So that's what I was talking about, the unrestricted use. So a soil cleanup objective comes into play, and if you have something that's above that unrestricted use. Unrestricted use just means that there's no more, the D C doesn't care whatever you want on the site. Anything that is above that then would fall into one of the soil S C O categories, and those are the ones that I outlined in the, in the letter. All right, so protection of health and, uh, of public health category, commercial, um, I have that here. For D D E is sixty-two, uh, milligrams per kilogram of soil. The highest level reported in any of those five samples that you were talking about was point zero three one. So from sixty-two, point zero three one, that's where our level is. So we're so much below that.
Why does this say they were on concentrations above the part three seventy-five?
Because part three seventy-five has a number of categories in it, right? So the lowest category is unrestricted use, meaning that you don't need to do any other review. That's what, that's what that category is. Everything above that then assumes that you're going to have some other use for the property. That report was done, and there was no indication of what this property was going to be used for, so they use that as a benchmark. We are now in a commercial category for soil cleanup objectives for pesticides. Now, you know, apple orchards in this area, lo- most agricultural properties have this condition. Most conditions, you know, are mitigated when they're above this, just by, uh, stripping that top soil, spurning it, and capping it. That's just how you mitigate pesticide use in, in this part of the country. Um, you only need to do that when you have a soil cleanup objective. And we are so far below that, we, we already need the soil cleanup objective, so that we don't have to do any. So we don't have to do anything on this site. Now, on top of that, what I was saying is that because we have a cut and fill condition here, and because the well already that had the contamination down on the wood line, we're going to be filling over that anyway. So by the time the parking lot is done and paved, it's all encapsulated. So.
So if I can add there, um, I'm, I'm a civil engineer, but I'm not an environmental engineer, nor am I used, uh, from New York State. So John had to explain it to me, so I'll do my best to try to explain it, because he had to break it down a little bit too. So you have the unrestricted use. It doesn't matter how you use the property at all. Then you get into residential use, commercial use, and then there's other uses. We don't fit into unrestricted use, but with commercial use, that's the thresholds he's talking about, and we're so far below that, we don't have it.
All right, so this is written a little confusing, at least to me it was.
If I was reviewing a report when it came out, I would have questioned the conclusions that they had.
Okay.
Just because they were very ambiguous about what they meant.
Okay.
Because they also mentioned a deed restriction. And what would your deed restriction be? That you have to identify that pesticides. Because they didn't identify what it. Um, because if it identified that if you want to reuse the land, you have to comply with soil table objectives, then that would have been, I think, very appropriate. Then you would have done that. You would have looked at what you had. You would have tested your soil, and you would have followed those criteria. That's what we're a little concerned about, is that we, we don't want to add a deed restriction that runs with the property forever on something that really doesn't need mitigation.
I think I've made a change that may make people happy, but I'm not sure. It's just a potential.
You want to read it?
I mean, I would love to. So I, I'm going to jump in. Are you, are you all?
I would love to.
Okay, so I prepared for the board a draft, uh, negative declaration for this application. I know it was quite lengthy. Um, the condition that, I don't want to call it a condition, but the mitigation measure that everybody is discussing right now is on the bottom of page five, top of page six. Um, and I was thinking of modifying that last two sentences to say. Um, and I was thinking of modifying that last two sentences to say, since it appears rec. three is located near to the limits of the current application, the planning board may consider conditioning any action on this application on the filing of a deed restriction, the purpose of which would be to reduce potential human and environmental exposure to the residual pesticides and shallow surface soils. Therefore, no adverse impacts on human health are anticipated. And this way, it's not binding, but you can explain those additional items and provide the map to the board, and they can say, no, you're doing the fill or whatever you said, and, or here's the map that, I just scrolled through to try and find it as well, and granted, I'm not really quite sure which map I'm looking for, but I didn't come across one that seemed to stand out in that regard that was more precise than just an outline of the property. But that's, would be my suggestion, so that it, at least for purposes of tonight, picks that down the road a little bit for the applicant to provide that information to the board. That may, was, maybe was in there, but we, we can't find it in four hundred pages.
The issue, Mr. Chairman, is you have a recommendation from the applicant consultant that you should consider a deed restriction on this property. Albeit different from the proposed use of the app, the applicant's saying, well, I'm going to encapsulate, but nothing in the part three talked about the encapsulation of this. So I think that if you defer this, you can review the grading plan, make sure that it is being encapsulated, make sure that you are filling and there's no cuts in this area. You can look at the map that Kelly talked about, and then make a decision in the future.
So we could incorporate that as a condition in the site plan?
Correct.
Because based on the representations tonight and in the E A F part three, they're kind of at odds, but taking the applicant at their word, you may not need this at all. So this gives you the option to say, okay, we agree, we don't need it, but give us this in hand so that we can confirm that.
You're okay with that? So, continue if you.
So the, the last two sections are consistency with the community plans and consistency with the community character. Um, and I can't say it any better than what I read in the draft, Kelly would read it. Because we confer that, you know, because the action, the town board actions, if you wanted to read that one?
Oh, I certainly can. Um, the board considered that the town board is considering changing the zoning for the applicant property from C conservation to R two, a designation that the property held for approximately eighty-five years. Additionally, the purpose of this construction is to provide additional purchase and confluence, not necessarily to expand the institution and draw individuals in commercial development to the area. If the town board adopts introductory local law number two of twenty-four, twenty twenty-four, there will be no conflict with the adopted plan or the zoning regulations, and the action be appropriate for the locations.
Anything else? Right over your head? Any questions, uh, James?
Is any of the, uh, part one anticipated to be curvaceous pavers?
So the only way, the only reason we would do, uh, part of this on this is if we had a recharge condition on the soil, but the soil is a very dense type of glacial till, it doesn't absorb anything. So we would be infiltrating an inch or less, twenty thousand minutes, several were run down. So we are doing instead of that, our formal embedded practices is a bio-sol system, uh, for water quality. And then, you know, definition of safety is what.
Um, I do have a question, I think it might be more, um, for our, our folks. Um, so as part of the A V, uh, building agreement, there's no left turn with trucks out of the, whatever that road, I don't know the name of the road, but onto Sterling Mine Road. Um, now with this traffic study, which I found very interesting, by the way, forty-nine miles an hour average going, um, or forty-eight and forty-nine, um, coming down that hill, I can see why it's a forty-nine, because people are going sixty coming down the hill. So now, at peak hour, you're going to have twenty minutes of folks trying to turn left and hoping not to get rammed by the people coming down the hill.
So let me, I mean, this is not weekday peaks, so it's not when commuter traffic is going on, on the weekdays. The weekdays, we had two or three curves, seven curves, I think is what it said. Um, this is only on Sunday in that time period with Baltimore on Sunday.
Okay, so, um.
And the, the people then will be, um, you know, the people that will be waiting, obviously, will be the guests of the, the services.
Do we need to address the construction piece of it, and is, are we comfortable saying all those cars that could potentially be turning left is safety, or is there some other way to address it?
I think the construction aspects will be covered by the previous restrictions on that road for the A V project, no?
Is this, or we have to, just say in property?
No, it's not. But it's the same road, ultimately that connects with Sterling Mine.
If, you know, if, if that's where the planning board been ahead and you want to impose that, that's something we can.
Well, I think we would want to do that, that the restrictions on that road as they exist today would continue when this project hits the construction phase.
So you want to take the resolution conditions from that previous?
That one, that one condition as to the.
Oh, from there to here.
Right.
I thought you meant that was continuing when this was being constructed, and I thought that that was.
They would stay, it would stay in place.
For this project.
For both projects, for both projects.
Okay. The, 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 the level of instruction, the type of construction of the A V project.
It's much greater.
Greater.
Understood.
Okay, uh, I'm not a construction manager, construction engineer, but my guess is that the size of the vehicles that will be going in and out for the A V project are probably, in many cases, significantly larger than what we're dealing with here. It's a discussion that ought to be had, um, and when we get to the site plan aspect of it, let's have that discussion, and we'll be in a position to provide you with better information. Um, I don't think we need to have that discussion right now for the neg deck, if that's where the board is going.
No, I would agree, I would agree with that, I would agree with that. And you're making an argument that the impact of your project is not going to be that great, because it's very small.
Correct.
So.
I mean, we have a, it's a one-story five thousand, slightly over five thousand square foot.
You know, excavators should be in and out of there in a week.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the biggest issue is, is grading. Okay, the rest of it is basically all our house, one of the time schedule for this project.
We're looking to the planning board for that one, but we're, we're hoping to actually clear the site, uh, as soon as we have the clearing window. Uh, for, for that, we're starting in October, and depending on if we're able to get to the foundation, we'll be able to finish before March, uh, before spring. If we can't get into the foundation and, and the like before winter comes, and then we'll, we'll probably, uh, be into late, late spring next year, for that. But there'll be a pause, obviously, during, during the, for that construction.
So you're talking a year and a half?
No, no, so, yeah, so we're talking October this year to March of twenty twenty-five.
For completion.
For completion, this is the smallest, it's like a big house. So the parking lot is probably the biggest amount of construction that we're going to be dealing with.
Twenty-four to twenty-five confused me, that's what it is, sorry, there you go.
Mr. Chairman, can I just address Susan's comment, just give you, give the board some numbers, so, um, please correct me if, if I'm wrong. The peak hour on a Sunday, because that's the one that you're really concerned with, at that intersection, the applicant's anticipating eighteen cars will make a left on the Sterling Mine Road at the peak hour.
Okay, I didn't see the breakout, okay.
Yeah, it, it's kind of hard to follow, uh, in these, that's why I asked the applicant to just double check that, but it, so it, it's not as many cars as I think you would think, there are a large number of cars going the opposite direction, the right turn.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Now, you have any questions?
Yeah, the A V lot is not affected by this panel, but, um, there's no place of worship there, is?
That is correct, so, uh, that is purely going to be handling audiovisual and, and other world headquarters. So, so think of it like Starbucks coming in and building their headquarters.
Okay.
And then next to that, you have a flagship Starbucks store.
Got you.
And, and that's what you have, so they don't have a Starbucks in headquarters, although they probably have plenty of. And so same thing, we're going to have plenty of activities in there, but only specific to this. This benefits the community, this project benefits.
But might not some of the residents be part of the congregations for this facility?
Some of that, some, but, uh, again, the majority, the, the reason for this is not for the audiovisual, is for the existing congregants who live in the area.
But any residents that would be in the congregations for this facility, that would further cut down on the traffic in and out.
Yep.
Absolutely.
That, that's exactly what traffic study has.
Which we did not incorporate, mentioned, so, in a serial lead.
Anything else?
No.
So, Sean, you want to?
I, I think we've gone through, uh, my comments, uh, I keep in my comments also to Kelly, and I think she incorporated where she could into the part three that you're going to consider, huh?
Negative declaration.
I'm sorry, negative deck, sorry.
Valerie, I don't think you had anything.
No, it's not.
Okay, uh, let me make a motion to approve the draft negative declaration with the changes that, uh, we've made here tonight. Um, can I have a second?
Oh, second.
One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yep.
And we have to schedule a public hearing, correct?
Yes.
And this would be a public hearing on the site plan?
This would be a public hearing on the site plan.
And that will be contingent on the town board changing the zoning at their next meeting?
Yes, so they meet on July eighth, I will finalize this negative declaration, and I will get it out tomorrow. Um, and I will also email it to the town boards, so they have it in advance at their meeting on that.
I believe that our next planning board meeting is five weeks from tonight. So there should be two town board meetings between tonight and our next meeting, correct? So you've got, you've got two cracks added with that.
I believe they anticipate, um, if, since the board just voted on this, they do anticipate adopting the local law. I feel like, I don't want to speak out of turn, but that's my understanding. So if you'd like, you can schedule the public hearing for August.
Six, which, I'll make a motion to that effect, have a second?
Yep, I'll second.
Favor? And that's as far as we can go tonight.
If you'd like, you can authorize the drafting of a resolution, that does not mean that you have to vote on it next meeting, but at least you have something to work off of if you want.
Okay, we can do that too, I'll make a motion to have Kelly draft a site plan approval resolution.
I'll second that.
On favor?
Aye.
Yep, um, and one last thing I wanted to mention is that this public hearing will be, is set on the plans that have already been submitted. So don't submit any new plans, I don't want to see any new plans, except for the additional material that we just asked for tonight.
Excellent, we did submit plans in May, and we.
That's what they're going to be on, that's, that's what the public hearing is going to be.
Comments on those, we've been held beforehand, no new, no new plans.
No new plans, I wanted to make sure I was really clear on that.
We will, we will, we'll be honest, made, made package, and then that will be more preparation of public hearing. Just information on the, uh, on the environmental site assessment.
Just that, yep.
Um, I have a question regarding that the material is being submitted, I may have missed that window of opportunity to click on it to download.
Yeah, we can get it.
Could you post that, and give us another link that we can get your data? I think that's how they.
I think you're, I think you're referring, I think you're referring to the Tuxedo Reserve.
Yeah, these were, these are our P D has.
Yep.
Okay.
We can resend them to you, though.
Okay.
I think that's what you're referring to, because those go away after ten hits, the Tuxedo Reserve. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I'll make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Favor?